In the summer, I don't think it matters.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome to the Board of Education Full Board Meeting for the School District of Waukesha on July 13th, 2016. Beautiful night tonight. Glad you could make it and be here. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue, will you please take the roll call?
William Baumgart.
Here.
Barbara Brzink.
Here.
Greg Dietz.
Here.
Amanda Roddy.
Here.
Patricia Madden.
Here.
Patrick McCaffery.
Here.
Kurt O'Brien. Karen Reinichek.
Here.
Joseph Como.
Here. Kurt is excused tonight. He had a business commitment to take care of. And Sue, will you also please verify that the meeting's been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. Usually we have bright lights now, but we're in the middle of summer, so we're gonna hold off until our September meeting on that. We do have a recognition tonight. Chris, would you like to introduce our new principal at Hawthorne?
I would love to do that, but he was unable to make it tonight after all, and he promised he'd be here next month.
You can't just, like, make him appear?
I'm kind of taking it easy on him, his first month.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Chris. We'll look forward to that next month, then. And we don't have any student representative reports tonight, so we're gonna roll right into the time to hear from our citizens. As in the past, we allow three minutes for our citizens to address the Board of Education. At the... we allow three minutes total with 30 seconds left. Barbara Brzink will indicate...
I will.
Just to take a moment to wrap up your thoughts for the last 30 seconds. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit and refrain from using any inappropriate language in any manner and be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future board meetings. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the Board of Education, refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering applause, or other behavior that might detract from the meeting. And also, in order to respect our speakers, let's turn off our cellphones at this time. And we do have one person signed up this evening, and that's Mr. Steve Edlund. It's kinda weird to see you over there and not here.
I've been up here before.
I know, I know.
Let's start with three minutes yet, Barb. I just want to make a comment that I was trying to watch the FNF meeting on Monday, and we had a guest speaker here, and her voice was totally blocked out.
Oh, maybe the microphone wasn't on.
Well, Glenn Nordert was sitting right next to her, and his voice was recorded every time, but her voice was not recorded until at least halfway through her presentation, so I have no idea what she was talking about, so... Okay, you can start.
Welcome, Steve.
Okay. This is in regard to the energy performance contract that we have with Siemens and the district's use of the energy exemption statute to exceed revenue caps in order to implement this program. As the Board knows, I've been very outspoken and vocal about the use of exceeding revenue caps in order to use this program to offset maintenance costs, because that's not the intent of law. The intent of the law is to actually produce energy savings so that the district would therefore have energy savings within its budget going forward, but that's not how we've been using this, nor, to be fair, any other school district in the state. The guest that we had was from the state, representing the state of Wisconsin, who is supposed to be our independent representative on this issue, and she talked about a lot of things related to what Siemens has done. Siemens was our performance contractor. As was pointed out by many, many people, some of these programs that the district decided to choose were, in my opinion, very unethical. The lighting project had absolutely nothing to do with energy savings. It was all about appeasing neighbors in the neighborhood. If you bought a house next to a school district, you gotta expect things like that. The rest of us who don't live next to a school, you know, it's not our problem, and we shouldn't have to pay for it, nor should the district charge us based on an energy savings program with a 70-some-year payback. That's just unethical. That's wrong. Also, you know, when we're talking about measurement and verification, performance contracting, you know, Megan did a great job of representing the state in talking about Energy Star programs for school districts, for schools within the state of Wisconsin, and particularly Waukesha School District. And I talked about that briefly when I was on the Board and wanted to go into that direction, and seemed like a lot of interest at the time. Of course, there was no free money above the revenue cap in order to get anybody's interest in something like that. Megan does a great job of being a cheerleader in the energy sector and trying to get school districts in that direction. Here's the problem we're gonna run into. Nobody in our district is qualified as an energy services manager, and nobody is gonna monitor this stuff once all the hoopla is gone. And that's just the realist side. I've been in school districts before where they've got an Energy Star plaque for their building from the federal government. It's sitting off in some side room. Nobody cares.
30 seconds.
Nobody really cares. So while this is all feel-good right now, I'm sure everybody's feeling good about all these improvements that we've made to the district, doubling the maintenance budget off of the taxpayers' back, but you approve this amount every year, $800,000. Prove me wrong. Don't put that $800,000 above the revenue cap this year. If the energy savings are truly there, do it within the cap.
Thank you, Steve. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address us at this time?
Sorry about that, Sue.
Mr. Reese?
I was looking through this, and I reminded us something that came up last month, and it was, we were talking about principals for hiring a new principal for one of the STEM schools, and I have nothing to say about qualifications or anything like that, but they were talking about, and a couple people brought up, because he's coming from around Madison. He's gonna transfer back and forth every day. I don't know if that's going forward still or not, but that's what was talked about. And it seems like it's a lot for something, for someone to travel back and forth from Madison every day, and they're gonna stick around for any period of time. Something Joe Cuomo said a while back that really stuck in my craw was, this is a district full of opportunity, and it is. It's a district full of opportunity, but very short on continuity. And when we have someone that's gonna travel back and forth this far, how long are they gonna stay? And if they sign a contract to stay, are we gonna hold them to that contract? Are we gonna do as we always do and just let them go when they wanna go? Because continuity, to take the best person may not be the most prudent thing to do if continuity isn't there. If they're gone every two years, you're replacing it, you have nothing built up in the community. There's no... there's nothing there as far as one person taking over from the next. Who knows where this is, and parents have no idea what's going on in their school that is right down the block. Where it used to be, we had continuity in this district. There were principals that were there all the time I was in school, you know, and that's gone, and we have all these... I don't know what's going on here, but I know that certain schools are just Hadfields on. I don't know. Since I've been here six years, I think we're on our fourth principal at Hadfield in my district. I don't... it's... I don't know what's going on. So anyways, I brought... I heard about that. I heard that. I noticed that, that you're talking about that long travel distance, and I just was worried about that, so... I'll say something. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address us at this time? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to our minute approval. We do have minutes from a regular board meeting on June 8th, and also executive session minutes also on June 8th. Do I have a motion for approval?
Some.
Moved by Barb. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Baumgart. Any discussion? Corrections? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call.
Barbara Brzink.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffery.
Aye.
Karen Reinichek.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes eight zero, Sue. Moving on with our communications, we'll begin with Superintendent Gray.
We'll correspond this evening.
Okay. We'll roll into Mrs. Brzink's report on the Waukesha Education Foundation. Barb, do you have a report?
I don't have a report, Mr. President, but I do wanna... I do have a reminder. I wanna remind everybody here and everybody out there listening that we have the Wisconsin... Waukesha Education Foundation Golf Outing on July 16th, so...
18th.
18th, I mean. So please register if possible. We wanna see you there that day, and all the fundraising, of course, is the benefit of our students.
Thank you, Mrs...
That's my part.
Thank you, Mrs. Brzink.
Barb?
Yes.
On the website, it has Monday, July 20th. Oh, it's still old. It's... I'm sorry. It's from last year. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Moving on to our Safety Committee report given by Amanda Roddy. Amanda?
Yes, thank you. The Safety Committee will be meeting next week, July 20th, at 9:00 a.m. So the following month, we will have a report to give.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Baumgart, will you please give the Charter School report?
I have no Charter School report this evening.
Wow. And do we have one... not for both of them? Charter School?
That's the one.
I'm so used to having you do safety, too, and I know Amanda's doing it, and I know we went through it, but I'm still thinking in my head, Bill has two reports to give right in a row. Change sometimes is hard to adapt to. We do have something that we do once a year. We take a look at our annual expulsion resolution. And Mr. Cook, do you wanna explain what the resolution is all about?
Yeah. For 20 years now, we have utilized Wisconsin statute to allow a panel of board members to review the expulsions if they do come up in the district instead of having a full meeting of the Board. In order for us to do that, the Board has to approve a resolution that defers to the judgment of the committee and then the recommendation of the Board, so that's what's before you tonight.
Okay. And there is another portion, too. I believe we have some verbiage in there that talks about if there's someone who can't show up at the last minute, that we have a quorum of two people for a three-person panel?
Correct. Two of the three people need to be present in emergency situations such as illness or other priority.
Okay. Is there a discussion or questions in this?
I'll tell... I'll make a motion for the approval of the annual expulsion resolution as stated in our handout.
Okay. Is there a second to that? Second by Mrs. Reinichek. Discussion? Mr. Baumgart?
Quite simply, as being, I think, the only person that was around here when we had all nine board members at the expulsion meetings back in '95 and '96, this is significantly improved over that. For instance, we don't have to have nine people trying to put their foot in and talk about something. It's much faster, and it's, I think, more expeditious, yet it is just as effective as it was back then, so I am very in favor of this.
I'm glad I never had to experience a nine-panel expulsion.
Lots of late nights.
Expulsion panel. Oof. They're tough enough with three on the panel. Any other discussion? Okay, Sue, will you take the roll call vote?
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Karen Reinichek.
Aye.
Barbara Brzink.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffery.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes eight zero, Sue. Moving on to the consent agenda. Mr. Cook, did we have any public gifts to present tonight?
Yeah, just one given by Fay Gordon. Seven-dollar, $50 gift as a memorial to her late husband, Dave Gordon. This gift is to be used for her grandson Max and his classmates as seen fit by the first grade teachers.
Thank you. Thank you for that gift. We do have a variety of categories for approval in the consent agenda. There were no expulsions for this last month, so at this time, if any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, please indicate. Okay, seeing none. Pat Madden, will you please present the consent agenda for approval?
Certainly, Mr. President. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources Committee approved of 17 resignations, one leave of absence, and 29 new or modified contracts. The information was provided in your packet, and an addendum was placed at your desks. Mr. President, I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Reinichek. Discussion? Mrs. Reinichek?
Yeah, what was the discussion about many of the AP principals? Do you know why they're leaving?
There was various good reasons. Either had a job at a different school district. One of them moved out of the area, quite, I think, out of state, actually.
Another one was offered a principal, full-time, full-principal position, so...
Right.
Typically, that's why they leave.
Logical explanations for it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call.
Patrick McCaffery.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Barbara Brzink.
Aye.
Karen Reinichek.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. And it passes eight zero, Sue. Moving on to the Superintendent's report given by Dr. Gray.
Thank you. You've probably seen some media reports. Summer school is in full swing. As in, I've talked about in the past, we are looking to expand that in future years. I think there's a lot of opportunities in the city to collaborate with, for example, Park and Recs, various daycare centers and so on, to expand our offerings. We do know that the more students are engaged in even recreational-type programs, the better they do when they come back in the fall. They don't lose as much learning over the summer. So I think that's an important factor for us in terms of improving our achievement is to expand as many opportunities as we can during summer school. Financially, it's more beneficial than extended school year, because we do not get any additional funding for extended school year, but we do get state aid for summer school purposes. So again, that's... Amy Reible will be working on that, and I'll be working with her to hopefully provide more opportunities for more students this summer. Mrs. Brzink reminded you of the WF Golf Outing on Monday. We have a very esteemed team that will be in there, Mr. Baumgart, myself, Mr. Cook, and Mr. Clark, and I don't know if we have any chance to win it, but...
Sorry, Darren.
We're gonna...
I'm going for fun.
Going for fun. Okay. All right. We haven't practiced all summer, but I don't think that matters. One other point, you've seen the... hopefully you've seen the new sign out front, which signifies who we are. I continually, over the years, would get calls from people who would say, you know, "Where is your building? Where are you?" Well, "I'm near this middle school on Maple Avenue," and I said, "Well, just look to the right a little bit." We were well-hidden behind bushes and trees and so on, so those things are getting done. We also have some new windows. We know that we're gonna be here for quite some time. We honestly don't have any kind of alternative location, so the new windows were important because the other ones were falling out, and now Jody will not have to shovel snow out of her office in the winter months, so we're pretty excited about that.
Didn't we test her on that when we, you know, hired her?
Right. It was getting... it was getting pretty bad. Finally, Representative Scott Allen has invited us to tour the Challenge Academy, which is at Camp McCoy, and it's October 5th. We have a group of people going up to that, and if any board member is interested in going to that, obviously, we'll probably be looking at taking a small bus or other type of transportation up there, so...
Tell us about that.
I need... I'm gonna go myself. I know some people here have been to it. It's an alternative program for secondary students, and I think it's an opportunity to learn how they... it's been very successful. I think it's gonna be a good opportunity to see how that goes. I know Jody has been to it.
Where's Jody?
You've been to it in the past?
Yes, it's a highly structured, alternative high school program for students, held on the base there, where kids participate in a very disciplined regiment, very attuned. It's generally designed for students who have not traditionally been successful in a traditional high school environment, so it does have a very high success rate for participants who engage in the program.
Again, if you're interested, let Sue know, and she's putting together the list of people that will provide Representative Allen's office.
Mrs. Brzink?
Mr. Allen isn't running it. He's just inviting us.
No, he's just inviting us.
Okay. I've heard about that.
Yeah.
When is that time?
October 5th. And that's my report.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gray, or Dr. Gray. Moving on to our committee reports, we're gonna begin with technology with Mr. McCaffery.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Technology Committee of the Waukesha Board of Education met on Wednesday, June 22nd, 2016. There were no action items, but there were two discussion items. The two discussion items were continuing projects, projects that are ongoing, and then we also see an update on proposed projects. The first project that we received an update on was Waukesha 1. The replacement iPads will be distributed for Wave 1. We are also evaluating new cases to reduce our breakage rate, as we are self-insured now. We will also be implementing two new tools for iPad management. They are called Apple School Manager and Apple Classroom. We received an update on the work involving the door access, the new card readers that were installing. There are seven more buildings yet to be completed, but the work should be done by the beginning of the school year. Our video surveillance project is completed in Lindholm. The rest of the schools, the upgrades and installs will begin after the door access pads have been completed. Our print environment is up and running, and we have some preliminary counts. We saved 4 million prints, 4 billion pages of printing with the new print environment. We went from 21 million pages to 17 million pages, so it was... it's pretty good. And that only includes the machines that we had, that we could monitor. We decommissioned quite a few individual printers as well, so the 4 million prints is probably low.
Mr. McCaffery?
Yes.
Was there limits put on amount of copies that could be run per building, or...
No, actually, we increased the amount.
Pardon me?
We increased the amount, because we allowed... we increased the student printing ability and also gave them color.
Wow.
The major thing that we did was called ghost prints. So for instance, what you would do is you would send something to the printer, it would print, and you just would never go pick it up. That has essentially been removed, because now you actually have to go to the printer and hit your card that gets you into the buildings to print. So you don't... there's no ghost prints anymore.
Mrs. Reinichek?
How many trees is that? 4 million pages?
It's all recycled, so it's no trees. Didn't save any. We use recycled paper.
All of it?
Yeah, most papers recycled now by federal law. That's a common misconception that we're saving trees. We use recycled paper here. Yep. Definitely.
So how old is that recycled paper? That's the question.
That's the key. How many times...
How many times has it been recycled?
Would be a better question, because that's really the success of recycling.
That is good news, though, that there are fewer and fewer trees that are being cut down for paper.
Yeah. Yeah, right. From recycled paper, definitely. Any other questions?
But I didn't know that. I didn't know that.
Yeah, we use...
That was the case.
Yeah, ours is recycled paper. Yep.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Brzink?
I'm sorry. Under Waukesha, we placement iPads. Are they any different than what they got the first time?
Yeah, we... because the amount of apps that we're running and the juice that it takes to run those, we're getting higher gigabytes on the iPads. Yeah, most definitely.
Thank you.
But from a cost perspective, it's almost a wash.
It's pretty much a wash, yeah, because as time goes on, technology, cost of technology, you know, will recede and get... and the iPads are actually even lighter than they were the original ones.
So the students keep these about three, four years, and then we assure them?
Yeah, this is a four-year cycle right now. Originally, it was gonna be a three-year, but we actually moved it up to four-year because our breakage rate was so low, which is why we went to self-insured, because we didn't experience... I mean, it was a waste of money to keep insuring it through a company. We could do it ourselves for cheaper, because we do have very low...
Breakage rate.
Breakage rate, yep.
Oh, my goodness. That's phenomenal.
Yeah, it was a big surprise that we could actually go to self-insured.
Wow.
Moving on, we received the update on our data environment. We are fully integrated into the Wise Dash Local Consortium now. Actually, Steve Schwelman, our Director of IT, has been elected to their Board of Operations. Work on our data lake continues. Our data lake will be used to supplement any data that will not be readily available on Wise Dash or Wise Dash Local. We will also be moving our behavior tracking into Infinit Campus over the course of the next month, I think.
So are we gonna have... I don't know if it's gonna be a board dashboard for the Board of Education, or will we have access to some of the dashboards that are being created?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Maybe a little bit of training on that?
I think that we're gonna have a link on it, actually, on our website. Other, you know, you won't be able to see... the general public won't be able to see everything, but there will be access to...
Administrators, teachers will...
Yeah, we'll be seeing everything, but we will be able to scale it down. But yeah, I mean, we can definitely...
To get more general statistics, obviously, we can't release information on individual students.
Right.
That's protected by law, but more of that 30,000-foot kind of...
Yeah, definitely.
...data.
Yep.
More summary data?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes. We also received an update on our website. We are actually working on a new district website, which is nearing completion, and we're also working on getting the individual school websites moved over to a more centralized hosting and maintenance system. We had an issue where the schools each really run their own websites, and a lot of times it was a volunteer that ran it. So as children would leave and parents would leave, sometimes the sites wouldn't be maintained very well, or passwords would be lost, or DNS records would be missing, so we're gonna try to centralize that all, so our... the person that runs our website right now has access to it. And then we also received an update on our boardroom audio/video with our new screens and our new sound and video quality, and I will let Steve know that there was a sound problem at the FNF meeting, so I'll let him know. Our second discussion item was based on proposed projects, and these are projects that we're going to be doing in the near future. The first one was wireless upgrades. We're going to be installing two new controllers to replace six of our aging ones. This will allow for increased serviceable wireless clients. We will also be upgrading our core router, upgrading our core routers to increase device capacity. Right now, at the end of the school year, we had about 21,000 devices a day, and we're expecting that to go up every year. The upgrades will also reduce space requirements and energy consumption. We will be able to fund these, 60% of this through the E-Rate, which is a federal program that's financed through your phone bills, actually. The universal connection charge, I believe, is what funds E-Rate. We're also looking at some door prop alarms currently, right now, at most of our doors. You can prop them open, no one would be notified that the doors are open. It's a huge security issue, so right now, we're investigating what it's going to take to get alarms put on the doors at the schools so they can't be propped open, someone will be notified if it's propped open for a certain period of time. We're also looking at additional.
That should, that should cut down, sorry, sorry, Ms. Madden. That should cut down on some of the hanky-panky that the students do every once in a while.
Yeah, it'll cut down on that, it'll, you know, it'll, it'll just increase security in the building as a whole.
Yeah.
No one's getting let in or let out.
Well, students have had, have been known to let friends in.
Yeah, it happens.
That sort of thing, so.
Definitely.
That'll be good.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be.
Now that you've told them that online, we'll do more of it.
There you go.
Well, it won't, won't happen. Shouldn't happen.
We're also looking at additional cameras for the elementary sites. We've had some issues recently at a couple of the elementary sites, so we're looking at, going over and above what, what is actually in the budget for the surveillance camera installs. And then they're also looking at tying in our voice web and social media systems together to enhance security. You know, we went with the new phones, the IP phones that have cameras on them, and, and our surveillance system that we're putting in, and also our new card readers. We're going to have that all tied together, so first responders and administrators and anybody else who needs access to certain parts of the school will have the access. And barring any question, that concludes my report.
Any other discussion on these? All right, thank you, Mr. McCaffrey. Appreciate it. Moving on to our Finance and Facilities Committee. Mr. O'Brien is out of town, as I announced before, so Pat Madden will be taking over that report. Pat?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have three action items tonight. The first is approval of participation in SWSA contract. The committee reviewed the proposed contract for participation in Southeastern Wisconsin School Alliance for the 2016-17 school year in the amount of $3,000 annually. The Southeastern Wisconsin School Alliance provides legislative counsel regarding matters of mutual interest with other districts in our region on constitutional and legislative decisions related to issues that affect schools. The committee approved the resolution for the district's participation in the Southeastern Wisconsin School Alliance for the 2016-17 school year in the amount of $3,000, and I so move.
Second?
Second by Mr. McCaffrey. Discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Brzink?
Mr. Gray, Dr. Gray. I'm assuming that there is a representative or representatives from this organization that meet with the Education Committee at the State of Wisconsin.
All the time. And actually, we have an attorney from DeWitt Ross Stevens who acts as a lobbyist for this group as well.
Okay.
So, and they, they will meet with legislators as well as others that are involved in education around the state.
How effective has our input been?
I think it's been very good with this organization. I mean, it represents really the whole southeastern corner of the state. I think most districts, at least the big districts, are involved in it.
I see that.
And I know they've been pretty successful in being able to meet with and, and address educational issues with our state legislators.
And you felt that, you feel that, that they've been considered credible and.
Oh, very, very much so. I've helped, I've, I've worked with them, I've developed information for them, they in turn have developed information for me, and so.
Okay.
I think it's been a good, it's been a good program, and I think a big help in terms of knowing when certain legislation is coming out immediately. We had a few times last year where there were some pieces of legislation buried in other legislation that was adopted at like at midnight. We got that information at 6:00 AM the next morning, and we were able to contact legislators to say, this is good, it's bad, whatever the case is, but at least we were able to get to those folks before any, any action was taken.
So the voice of this group has been effective?
Very good, yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Madden?
I think it's been much more effective than, in many cases, WASB, because it's specifically for our districts.
Yes, yes.
And WASB has to represent the whole state.
Right.
So for the minimum amount we pay each year, we're getting a really good deal.
That's a good point, Pat. I would, I would agree.
Mr. Brzink, or Baumgart?
Thank you.
Sorry.
It's the second time you've tried.
I did that, I did that like a year ago, didn't I?
Yeah, please correct that, would you?
Sorry about that.
Causes lots of domestic troubles. Anyway, there's two districts that pay less than we paid. Do you know why? Elm Brook and, are they short on money over there, or?
I, it could be. It's getting rough over there.
And another one, South Milwaukee, but.
South Milwaukee does because they are the fiscal agent and they provide services in lieu of, of.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but I'm not sure about Elm Brook.
Okay, so there's some kind of a.
Well, I take that back. Elm Brook provides a site to meet as well as, they made supplies and so on, so they do provide some things in lieu of, I'm just guessing on Elm Brook, but I do know South Milwaukee's been the fiscal agent.
It's a service.
Yep.
I'm fine.
And actually, many moons ago, Darren was a fiscal agent, 18 years ago?
18 to 20.
You weren't that old.
I don't think it's a large enough discount to.
I don't think my credit's good there.
Yeah, so.
Sandbox at that time.
Any, thank you, Mr. Baumgart. Any other discussion on the SUSA contract? Okay, Sue, will you please take the roll call vote?
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Barbara Brzink?
Aye.
Karen Reincheck?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes eight zero.
Our second action item is approval of White Rock Campus Agreement. The committee reviewed a three-year lease agreement for a portion of White Rock Campus with Adult Day Services of Southeastern Wisconsin LLC as of August 1, 2016. This item was discussed at the May and the June meeting. The agreement now includes language on early termination, and utility cost estimates have been built into the monthly lease charge. The committee approved the agreement with Adult Day Services of Southeastern Wisconsin LLC at White Rock Campus Agreement for a period of three years, and I so move.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Brzink. Discussion?
Yes. Even though I've, I've read the, written the documents here, what if they do not stay there three years?
Darren, would you like to take that?
The language we put in terms of the out was for the district. We could opt out after, or with 120 days' notice.
We could.
We could.
But what about them?
I don't know if we have specific out language for them in terms of a deadline that I can remember.
I don't think we do, yeah. I just was wondering, you know, that.
Yeah.
They could pull out and.
Yeah, a lot of this, this lease, what we did was we basically took the Richardson lease.
Okay.
The Pleasant Hill lease.
The Pleasant Hill one?
And use that as the framework for this lease, so that language, that contract must not have, or lease must not have out language, the tenant out language either.
Okay.
So we didn't really address that issue. You know, ultimately, once they stop paying rent, they, they can send that message as well, but.
Well, sure.
That's certainly not an ideal situation.
It's not a very large amount of space, 3,830 square feet.
The lower level, I think they're going to use, you know.
Yeah.
Right, right. Well, I hope that we can get an opportunity to go over there and visit. It's really a valuable program, does some wonderful things.
Any other discussion or comments on the contract? Like Darren had said, we have had past examples like this, and we've had our attorney review this, and our, our committee had looked at it actually over the course of a couple of different months. We had some questions that we wanted to send back, and those were answered, so. Ms. Roddy?
Yes, thank you. I just, curiosity, where did this, all of these discussions start? Did this group approach the district, and the district say, we have space, comrade? Where did this begin?
Yeah, Mr. Clark?
I believe Mr. Cook was approached by them.
It's part of our conversations around transition in special education. We've had a number of outside agencies at the table when we've been talking about post-secondary outcomes for our students, and Adult Day Services is well-established in Milwaukee County and Wash, Washington County, and they were looking to expand into the Waukesha area. It was at that time that we started talking about this being a good option. Waukesha is, in the county, we end up getting a lot of young adults move into the area who have more, more substantial needs after high school because we have a number of group homes in the area that provide support. So this is an option, a day option for those young adults as they transition from school to a post-secondary experience.
Okay, thank you. If I can just add, this is similar to what the district provided with the sale program at that same location, is that correct? Am I correct in that?
It would, it would serve the individual with the same type of need, however, this is targeted for the 21-plus student.
But once they've graduated.
So, once they've graduated from school, this is the adult experience for them. It will also, they're looking at program options for, for our students outside of what would be the school day, so what would happen 2:30 and beyond in the afternoon for people who are looking for job exploration, social opportunities and such.
The reason I had asked that is I have, I have family who's gone through what the district provided for that sale, and this is a program that would apply to them, and they, one of them is, has been very successful. He's actually in college now because of what the district provided, but if we have this addition of programming, I, I think it's a great addition for the community as a whole and, and happy that we can hopefully have with, continue.
Yeah, I think there's a good dovetail, a good synergy that goes on there, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, so we have a motion on the table to approve the White Rock Campus Agreement is presented. Sue, will you take the roll call vote?
Karen Reincheck?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Barbara Brzink?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes eight zero, Sue. Pat?
Our third action item is approval of the 2015-16 budget transfers and amendments. At the time the budget is adopted, the budget contains the administration's best estimates of the district revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year. As the year proceeds, additional information becomes available that impacts the sources available to the district and the planned uses of district funds. A combination of budget transfers and amendments to the original budget were presented to the committee. The committee approved the budget transfers and amendments as presented, and I so move.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Mr. McCaffrey. Discussion? All right, Sue, why don't you take the roll call vote on this?
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Barbara Brzink?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Karen Reincheck?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes eight zero. Considering the $145 million operating budget that we have, we made amendments and transfers of a quarter of a million dollars, it's a pretty tiny, tiny percentage, and I think it's just amazing how close Darren and his team comes with this stuff, so. Want to make a quick comment there, Ms. Madden. Back to you.
Very good, thank you. The committee was presented the budget report for the month of June. $42,281,936 was reported in the general fund revenue, and $25,906,040 was expended during the month. $1,714,902 was reported in the Special Education Fund, and $5,765,206 was expended. The district is operating in accordance with their budget projections in other areas. No comment on that. I'll move into the next discussion, which was the Energy Projects Update. The committee was presented a report by district maintenance staff and the Director of the Wisconsin State Energy Office, who was brought as independent third party to validate the efficiencies garnered from the facility site improvement projects included in the performance contract issued to Siemens Industries in October 2014.
And we do, we do plan on continuing to look at the measurements year after year. We do have people on staff, maybe with not necessarily the level of expertise that the person we commented before, but we do have people on staff that are very good at this, and we will be keeping track of, of that over time. I think these are, these are some really good projects that we completed, and they will help save money over time, actually have helped save money already, and we look forward to continuing to measure that, to make sure that we continue to save money year after year, so.
And they are easier and safer to operate in many instances.
Absolutely.
For our employees.
Absolutely. The, the safety factor definitely went up. Some of the, some of the older rooms, and you're looking at some of the equipment, it was, I, I thought there were some safety issues that we had to address there, too, so it's good from many, many perspectives.
Right. And our third item is the 2016-17 budget update. The committee was presented with several scenarios and preliminary levy estimates for the 2016-17 due to loss of revenue. Open enrollment numbers trend were also shared. A preliminary budget will be presented at the August meeting. And we have the 2015-16 year-end update. The committee was updated on contingency plans being developed to close, for the close of the 2015-16 fiscal year. These items will require committee and board action in August and September. And, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Madden. Thanks for filling in. Ms. Reincheck, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you. With the students decreasing, I'm trying to remember what, that graph that we got that showed, was it just overall, I mean, it wasn't at the, this finance facility meeting, but it was about a year ago, and Todd showed a projection that was a trend of either just babies being born in Waukesha or families living here or something, and the amount of students that we actually have, I think it was for maybe a discussion on a new middle school or something.
Yeah.
Saying we would need a new one.
Well, we are, right. It, the, it, it basically looked like this, where we had kindergarten here and then kind of going back up eventually, but the, you know, the high schools are going to drop, middle schools, high schools are going to drop for a few more years, and then if that trend continues, we'll, we'll climb back up. But right now, we're in a, we're kind of in that down phase where we're losing students. But if I look at the numbers at, at kindergarten and so on, we could be, you know, coming back up in, it's probably going to be at least five years or more.
Yeah, there's.
And that could change, too, so.
There's a number of factors that go into enrollment, and part of it is birth rate. And actually, we did see, I want to say maybe four or five years ago, we saw a chart that looked at the population, actually, in the area, and enrollment, and we have pretty much been within 1,000 students of an up and down since 1975. So hopefully, we're seeing the trough, and it'll start to go back up again. And that's only one factor. Birth rate is only one factor, and people moving in here is another factor. Obviously, there were other factors that we talked about at our FNF meeting, too, so it's a complex thing. There is no one reason that we can look at. What we can do, though, is we can look at what can we do to improve on the things that we control. We don't control birth weight rate, we don't control people moving in here, but we do control our programs and the quality of programs that we offer, and so, yeah. Anything else, Mrs. Reincheck?
Oh, thank you.
I think annexation will have a big deal with that, too, with the water boundaries that were established.
Oh, yes.
Now, if we're going to Lake Michigan water, our borders are kind of going to be severe.
Yes, yes.
So.
That is definitely a positive factor, absolutely. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Madden. Appreciate that. We'll move on to our next committee report. That is curriculum instruction given by Mrs. Barbara Brzink.
Mr. President, there is no report this evening. We did not have a meeting in July.
Thank you. Moving on to Human Resources, again, we'll bounce back to Pat Madden.
Yes, we have one action item tonight, which is the approval of the recommended candidate for the position of Principal of Bethesda Elementary School. The administration is recommending Stella Miranda for the position of Principal of Bethesda Elementary School. Ms. Miranda is a highly respected administrator in her current role of Associate Principal at Rufus King. She has been a teacher in MPS for 20 years and an administrator for one. She has a strong background in staff evaluation and development, curriculum, and educational instruction. She effectively leads student discipline and the learning climate. Ms. Miranda is a bilingual, data-driven leader who has a strong vision for student success. She is very effective at working with all diverse populations of parents, students, and staff. She has strong interpersonal and communication skills that will help her be successful as the new principal of Bethesda Elementary School. Salary and benefits will be according to middle management policies. I move to approve the appointment of Stella Miranda to the position of Principal of Bethesda Elementary School.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Second by Mrs. Brzink. Discussion? Not, not to just focus on one of the qualifications, but having, finding a leader with the bilingual talents that she has, with the dual-language program that we have at Bethesda, what a nice find, what a great, great match. There were many things, many good things that were stated about her, not to minimize There were many things, many good things that were stated about her, not to minimize those, but that was a really important one. Chris, did it take a long time to find this match?
Oh, it took us, I believe we posted this at the end of, what was it, the beginning of May? And we did run a number of interviews, and although the bilingualism wasn't a requirement, it was preferred, we did interview a number of bilingual people. And we went through a couple of processes with the leadership team and the parents over at Bethesda Elementary School. And so, this particular candidate just received high accolades from the interview team at Bethesda on Monday, and were unanimous in their choice that Stella would be a good leader at Bethesda. So, I do feel pretty lucky. It took a long time, but I think that things happen for the best, and I have high hopes here.
Excellent, excellent. Thank for your, your hard work and the team's hard work on this. Any other discussion or questions? Okay, Sue, will you take the roll call vote to approve the proposed principal over at Bethesda?
William Bumgarth?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Barbara Brusink?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes eight zero. And Chris, maybe you'll have two principals to introduce at our next meeting.
I think so.
Excellent, excellent.
President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Madden. Moving on to Compensation Committee. Do we have a report on that, Ms. Madden?
Oh, yeah, no meeting, and in a way, that's very good.
Okay. And our Policy Committee, I do believe we have a report on this, Mr. Bumgarth.
We do have something here. We have two action items to deal with this evening. They've both been presented to you previously. The first one deals with policy 8343, which is on the preparation of the board agenda. This policy has been revised and reflected, reflects updating and current titles. And this is the one where, if you have that in front of you, you will find on the second page, we're really just modifying the, under the General Business, the Communications item has been expanded to be Communications and the Waukesha Education Foundation Report. And J has been expanded, rather than just the Charter School Report, as Charters, the Charter, School, and Program Report. And this is the only changes to policy 8343 that was presented, must have been in June. And I so move for the approval of that change.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Brusink. Discussion? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call.
Barbara Brusink?
Aye.
William Bumgarth?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. And it passes, Sue, eight zero. Mr. Bumgarth?
Okay, yes. The other potential is a new policy, also presented to you previously. This is to incorporate the Wisconsin Seal of Biliteracy and Global Education Achievement Certificate. This new policy will provide access to the Wisconsin Seal of Biliteracy and Global Education Achievement Awards to graduating high school students. As we've mentioned previously, this, and this went through both CNI before it came to policy. The purpose here presented by D was, first of all, it's part of the whole, I don't want to say trend, that's kind of putting too lightly, the move that is going on to have people become literate in more than one language. And it's going to help the kids when they graduate on their transcripts, on their resumes and things like that, to be able to prove quantifiably that they have accomplished the fluency in another language. We have many kids that are available, are able to do that currently in the Spanish language, and we've been working hard with that population, but this is going to be broader than, excuse me, just Hispanic. So, it's just a real positive for our kids, it's really not costing us anything. So, I would like to move for the new policy for the Wisconsin Seal of Biliteracy and Global Achievement Certificate to be presented as earned.
Is there a second to that motion? Second by Ms. Roddy? Discussion? I think this is really, this is fantastic. We have focused on our younger-aged students for years, and it's really great to, it's not like they stopped learning, you know, after the early years, going to high school. I think this is a great recognition. These will be on their transcripts and diplomas. So, it's a, I think this is a good way to encourage our students to continue to speak that second language or another language, moving into high school, moving through high school. And I think a lot of students realize that can help them get into college, so on and so forth. But this is just a little extra kind of notoriety of the hard work that they've done and kind of putting a stamp of that they really completed a fair amount of work during those years. So, I think this is a really good, really good thing for them. Any other comments or questions? All right, Sue, please take the vote.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Barbara Brusink?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
William Bumgarth?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes eight zero. And Bill, this, this would be intended for this next year, do you know? Is it?